Two minutes to air, one minute to the livestream. We'll take a fifteen-minute recess.
Is this, oh hey, Grace Smith, Planning Department, I didn't know if this was on or not. The chair is close by in traffic, so we're just gonna wait for her to get here. We'll be starting in just a few minutes, so if you want to take care of any last-minute business, feel free, and we'll get started as soon as she arrives. Thanks.
Is that the over-under? I got you, I love it. It's a busy week here for us, I gotta be back here the rest of the week for the planning conference, but I'm ready, let's do it, let's get out of here.
Forty-six, I'm going for forty-six. I'm going for forty-six. From the time we start, not from five.
Good evening, welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to the elected officials. We emphasize that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible via the Zoom virtual platform. In the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or be seen on video by default. In order to maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on an agenda item tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called, so you can make your comments just like an in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting tonight by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all the pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if anyone else wishes to speak. At that point, you will digitally raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone, and when recognized, please state your name and your address before making your comments. The applicant has a total of ten minutes for a presentation; each speaker after the applicant has two minutes to speak. Commissioners, as a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you obtain the floor by being recognized by the chair. The time to make all public statements is before motions are made. Once a motion is on the floor, further discussion regarding that motion must come after a second. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Finally, I ask everyone here, the commission members, the staff, and the public, to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. If someone fails to act in that manner, the chair will ask the offending person or persons to leave the meeting until such time they regain personal control. If decorum fails to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until a genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Cameron.
Here.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Here.
Commissioner Baker has requested an excused absence. Commissioner Cutright.
Here.
Commissioner Graves-Mines has requested an excused absence as well. Commissioner Gurem.
Here.
Commissioner MacIver.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
And Commissioner Seeks has also requested an excused absence. Commissioner Trapp.
Here.
Commissioner Valentine.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Young. Chair, I have not heard from Commissioner Young, so...
He sent an email requesting an absence that he and his household, everyone is sick.
Oh, no, okay, I've got it, thank you. And that's it, we have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, are there any adjustments to the agenda? I don't think there are any...
None at the moment, but if our former Chair of Planning Commission, Austin Amendalio, should show, we may want to do some adjustments at that time to enter the resolution for him into the record.
Okay. At this time, we'll take the approval of the minutes and the consistency statements. Do we have a motion to approve?
So...
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright, is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Trapp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, Commissioner Williams would like to make a statement.
Thank you. I'd like to say on public record that I was mentioned in an article published by the NNO on September 29th, 2023. This article was written by Mary Helen Moore, and the article was a series of questions provided to the mayoral and city council candidates. These questions were a culmination of questions from the community, and in the article, I was mentioned, as well as my title, as Planning Commissioner, and I wanted to say for the record that I was speaking as a private citizen and not as a Planning Commissioner, and most importantly, not on behalf of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move to case Z220064618 Moorhead Avenue. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aaron Kane with the Planning Department. As you stated, this is for zoning map change case Z2200064618 Moorhead Avenue. I can state for the record that all properties within 600 feet, as shown on this map, were mailed a notice of public hearing on September 22nd, 2023. In addition, a sign was posted on the site on September 26th, 2023, and affidavits on file for that are in the Planning Department. The site is located at 618 Moorhead Avenue and is 2.945 acres in size. The request is to change the zoning from OID to CGD with a graphic development plan in order to allow for a wide range of uses. Staff has determined that this request is consistent with the existing place type of neighborhood services. As stated before, the existing zoning is office and institution with a development plan. The site is surrounded by OI, RS8, and RU52 zoned land. The aerial map shows the general location of the project, bounded by Moorhead Avenue and Vickers Avenue and just to the southeast of the Durham Freeway. The development plan indicates two access points. A private driveway entrance is proposed along Vickers Avenue and one along Moorhead Avenue. Minimum open space and tree coverage are proposed. No impervious surface limit is required for this site. The area lies outside of any watershed protection overlay, but the development plan does commit to a limit of 90% impervious for the site. Shown here are the summary of commitments currently in place on the development plan, including a range of civic, office, commercial, and residential uses, that the gray stone inn mansion shall not be demolished, that there will be additional evergreen understory trees planted along the southern edge of the parcel, a .6 opacity buffer along the eastern property line, and construction of a concrete bus landing pad and bus shelter. Neighborhood meetings were held on June 20th, 2022, with 51 community members in attendance. Two commitments have been, two comments have been received on social pinpoint relating to this case, and actually, we've had five new, sorry, comments provided on social pinpoints, we're up to seven now, just wanted to acknowledge that. Concerning the commercial nature of the proposed rezoning in a historic residential neighborhood, crosswalk improvements along Vickers, and better integration of the event venue into the neighborhood. Staff has determined that this request is consistent with the place type map designation of neighborhood services, and meets 15 of 24 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing, we will hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening fellow commissioners, I'm Dan Jewell, I'm a landscape architect and the regional director of Thomas Sutton's Durham office right here in downtown Durham. With me is Mr. Bob Mills with Hem and Spire, they are now the owners and hope to be developers of the historic house and the site, and his associate, Jordan Raylander, as well. The reason that we're really here tonight is, there was a very, very restrictive development plan zoning put on this property in the late 1990s. The previous owner's desire to do bed and breakfast, which was noble, seemed like a very good use for the site. Unfortunately, it was good for about eight or nine years, and then they shut it down. The, with no other feasible use available to the site under the current zoning, it basically sat empty for over a decade, and it was largely unmaintained. If you had gone in it just a couple of years ago, the first time I did in a while, the plaster was coming off the walls inside, it was literally, some of the ceilings were caving in, it was really falling into disrepair, the roof wasn't being maintained. But since Hem and Spire purchased the house a few years ago, they at least have spent a lot of money on stabilization efforts to keep it from falling into further disrepair in hopes that we can be successful in our zoning request with you and the council. So Hem and Spire did come up with a path forward that will preserve and commit to saving this historic home with a package of potential uses and potentially some new construction that will allow the financial stability that the bed and breakfast did not, so the resources will be available to keep this grand historic house up. So now, after more than two and a half years and many, many meetings with the neighbors, including the Moorhead Hills Neighborhood Association, particularly the nearby neighbors, the adjacent neighbors, we've come up with this package, which allows more than the previous zoning did, but is still very restrictive, we think, which was of concern to the neighbors because the general commercial zoning is the only zoning that will allow the event center retreat use, which are one of the uses that we're proposing for the site, that neighborhood commercial or O&amp;I would not. So we have whittled the list of permissible uses in general commercial down to a fairly narrow window of what those might be, and we hope that those are now acceptable to the neighbors after these years of meeting with them. Those uses include residential, at a maximum of 20 units. At one point in the last couple of decades, the building was actually used for apartments, I think there were eight or 10 of them in there. Public and civic uses, including clubs, lodges, museums, daycare, maybe medical offices, place of worship, and parks. Office uses, commercial uses, which should include the conference center, the retreat house, or event venue, which are the main reason that we're requesting the rezoning to GCD rather than NC or OI, as well as overnight accommodations. So if a bed and breakfast makes sense in the future, we'd still be able to do that. And there's actually one modification to the text commitments that you have in your package right now. This was just worked out last week in another, yet another meeting that we had with the neighbors, and we felt it was a really good idea. So what we did is we changed the language relative to retail, I think it's about the fourth or fifth line down on the text commitments. And that new language commits to restricting the allowed retail uses to only those uses related to galleries and studios, art studios, dance studios, things of that nature, as defined in the UDO. Commercial use categories, as well as the previously stated listed in there, veterinary clinic is a potential use, but we've said no outdoor kennels whatsoever, it would be all internal. Again, we are committing to saving this historic house, it's one of the last remaining grand homes from the days that Moorhead Hills was the neighborhood to be in at the turn of the last century, not the previous century. And we believe that this very limited list of uses will give the flexibility to keep the business of the building, which is important, financially viable for now and the future, and ensure the long-term care and protection of the house that it needs to survive, which is not only important to Hem and Spire, but very important to the neighborhood as well. For this reason, we respectfully request that you send a request forward to council with a positive recommendation. We're, of course, happy to answer any questions you might have, and Madam Chair, with your permission, I know there are a few speakers in the audience this evening, but in particular, our immediately adjacent neighbors, Steven Ball, or David Ball and his wife Susan, have sent a very strong letter of support, they're not able to be here tonight, with your permission, I'd like to show you this, and if it's... If it's okay, I'll hand it out to the commissioners.
All right. Are you done, Dan? All right. Liz McGaffey. Do you want to speak? Mike, do you want to speak? You have to come up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
My name is Mike McGuffey, and I live at 904 Vickers Avenue. My wife and I have lived across from Graystone since 1986 through its reiterations. It was an apartment complex. We originally moved there, and then it was bought by a local Durham resident who fell in love with it, and he cut out the apartments and restored it to its grandeur. However, his bed and breakfast concept didn't produce the business necessary to keep up a building of that size, and it stood vacant for eight or 10 years, it said. At that time, it finally got a buyer, Hem and Spire. I'm only speaking for myself. The Neighborhood Association has met with them many times, and I've attended all of those meetings and discussed what they were trying to do there in great detail with all the neighbors. They did a very fine job of talking with us, listening to us, and trying to work up their proposal to help the neighborhood. It's always been my personal concern that if anything was going to go on there, it needed to be a business plan that would generate revenue sufficient to maintain the building in the state that it deserves to be maintained in. And I believe this organization wants to keep that and do that for this building. It's a very difficult thing to do, but they've discussed the plans that they have, and personally, I believe it's a possibility, it will work well, and I am for it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Bob Mills. Jordan, I assume, same. Okay. Is there anyone else in the, here, in person, meeting that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
I have signed up via Zoom to speak.
Okay, you can come up to the podium. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Arujio. I live at 911 South Duke Street, which is about two and a half blocks away from that property. I've lived in Moorhead Hill for like 21 years now, and I'm speaking basically in favor of the application. I want to express our appreciation that the applicants have engaged in genuine and substantive interactions with the neighborhood. As sort of an aside, some of our neighbors would wish that the process had recorded some of the substance of those interactions in the documentation, rather simply that meetings had happened, because not everybody knew that they had to come in later and add individual comments. So that's just a matter of process. I'll say that we support it with reservation. We wish there were a way to have achieved these goals without going to commercial general, which we think is probably a bad precedent for a historic residential neighborhood, but it really seemed to be the only way since there wasn't a way to add these additional uses to IO. The concerns of the neighborhood, as you've heard, are to maintain the building above all, but also to make sure that all of the uses that both the present owners and future owners might engage in, either in the building or within additional buildings in the property, were consistent with those goals. And so that led us really to sort of thread the needle. We were really trying to come up with a plan that would, again, as many have referenced, generate enough revenue to ensure the stability, the preservation of the building with a viable business, but also to make sure that it was not so potentially attractive to additional uses, and even more of our concern to future buyers, to engage, to endanger those goals of both the building and especially about the neighborhood uses. And so, given that, we're supporting the limitations.
Your time's up.
Okay. Anyway, we appreciate the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person that would like to speak? If there is anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. We have David Ball.
Okay.
We can hear you.
You can hear me, okay. It's okay if you can't see me, I'm too ugly to be seen. In addition to my letter, which you have in front of you now, I just wanted to say this. Susan and I have lived here since 1985, a year earlier than the McGuffeys, who lived across the, who live across the street. My property adjoins the mansion property along what is our southern border and the mansion's northern border. This means that outside our bedroom windows, within feet, is where the activities and the business of this property, this seeking a rezoning, sits. So I want to assure the commission that after having worked for a long time, many, many conferences with Hem and Spire, that we are perfectly comfortable with what they are trying to do, that it will not negatively impact anything about the neighborhood, and that it will serve its purpose of maintaining what I consider one of Durham's major visual landmarks. It's a kind of a gateway path to the city, not quite, but pretty close. So we support this very strongly. I'll point one more thing out and then shut up. There are uses under the current zoning that would have a far more negative impact on the neighborhood than what Hem and Spire is planning to do, which is why we welcome their presence so much, and we've become, become very familiar with them over the past couple of years now. And I think their chances of succeeding here are far greater than anyone else that's have been anywhere near this property in the 35 years that we've been here. So we strongly urge the committee to recommend that this rezoning be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom platform that would like to speak? Please use the raise hand feature.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I just want to second what Liz and Mike have said, and David and Rochelle, that the neighborhood does support the use that Hem and Spire is proposing. I live at Vickers Avenue, across the street from David, and a couple houses down from Liz and Mike. And when we first started engaging in this process, I was really concerned about what was going to happen, the future of the building, and the future of the neighborhood, and the impact that it might have on the surrounding neighborhood and the kind of bigger neighborhood. And we've been through the process with, I've gone to some of the meetings with Hem and Spire and have been sent any information I've asked to. And after going through all the zoning for OI and commercial, what they're proposing and the limitations that they are putting on the commercial zoning have really eased my mind as an adjacent neighbor, and I want to reiterate that I support the project and hope that you will support the project and send it to city council to be voted on.
Thank you. Are there any other, anybody else in the Zoom? All right, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. I see staff at the microphone who would like to speak.
Yes, hi. Could I just make, if I could ask Dan to go back to the podium? Dan, can I just clarify for the record, so the new commitment that you are proposing is to change the list of commercial uses that are going to be allowed under this development plan to be limited to art, music, dance, photographic studios, and veterinary offices without kennels? Is that correct?
Specifically, the retail uses under the commercial kennel.
Yes, the retail uses under that kennel. Okay.
That's correct. I'm on the record with that.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure we have that clarified. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I am now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. David, Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. Can you expand or elaborate? I think this is great that you got the neighbors involved, and I appreciate the feedback here. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the business plan, such as the restaurant or other things that you plan to choose to make this profitable and make it go?
Yeah, yeah. I'll start out a little bit. Mr. Mills may jump in and correct me a little bit, but what we're looking at is we want the, right now, the immediate interest is to do something that would be sort of an event center, club, that sort of thing, where there could be weddings and folks could come in and, you know, hang out and do business meetings. That would potentially have a restaurant or a bar associated with it as well. But the reason that we're asking for the broad range of uses is who knows where the world will be 10 years from now and what people might want to do? And who knows, you know, what would still be a viable business plan that would allow this to go? So the immediate interest right now is to do the event lodge center, which is unfortunately, as Rochelle said, not allowed in the O&amp;I district, which is why we're going for the CG. But Bob and his company, they hope to have a plan in place that will ride with this building for another 40 or 50 years and not have to come back again.
Do you see something like a brewery or something like that as a possibility?
No, we can't do a brewery. I think that's only allowed in industrial zones.
When you restrict it, okay.
Yeah. I think you could sell beer, but you couldn't make beer.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other discussion or questions? Yes, Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, I'd just like to go on record and say that I commend you on your outreach to the community. It's not very often that, at least from my personal opinion, that the developers and those involved do a good enough job in reaching out to the community. So thank you, and I hope that others would model your conduct in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty. May I have a motion to move this case forward?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we take case Z 22 00064 618 Moorhead Avenue to be forwarded to the city council with a favorable recommendation with the associated changes to the text amendments.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Valentine to move case Z 22 00064 618 Moorhead Avenue with associated updated, what was it? Text amendments with a favorable recommendation to city council. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeru?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
Yes.
Mr. Gurim?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Pass is non-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. You don't want to stay and hang out? All righty, moving on to case Z, yeah, Z 22 000550 Page Road Greenwood Homes. May we have the staff report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aaron Kane with the Planning Department again for case Z 22 00050 Page Road Greenwood Homes. I can state for the record that all properties within 600 feet, as shown on this map, were mailed a notice of public hearing on September 22nd, 2023. In addition, a sign was posted on the site on September 26th, 2023. Affidavits are on file with the Planning Department. The proposal site is located at 2912 and 2914 Page Road and is 9.772 acres in size. The request is to change the zoning designation from RR to PDR 7.827 in order to build up to 70 townhouses. The existing place type designations are MRN and NS. Should the zoning map change request be approved, staff recommends changing the designation on the entire site to mixed residential neighborhood. The existing zoning is rural residential. The site is surrounded by PDR and RR zoning to the south, office to the west, industrial light to the north, and single-family residential zoned land in the city of Raleigh to the east. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. Across Page Road, land is in the jurisdiction of the city of Raleigh. There is one significant commitment regard for this case, which is a commitment to a one-time contribution to the Durham Dedicated Housing Fund of $17,500. The proposal includes two points of entry onto Accent Park Drive, which connects to Page Road. As part of the annexation case that goes along with this zoning map change request, the applicant has agreed to include the entirety of Accent Park Drive to be annexed into the city at the request of city transportation. Future points of access are provided to the west and south of the site to tie into future development. Open space and tree coverage are on the eastern side of the site, providing a buffer from Page Road. The applicant held neighborhood meetings on May 10th and 11th, 2023. There have been no comments on social pinpoint to date. If the zoning map change is approved, staff recommends changing the place type designation to mixed residential neighborhood. The proposal is consistent with 14 of 23 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May we have the applicant come to the podium, please, and present?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Landon Lovelace with Underfoot Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of George Weller with Greenwood Homes Raleigh. George is unfortunately out of state on family business, so he's not able to attend tonight. I think Aaron covered most everything in the staff report. Just wanted to state, this was an existing landscape yard for a number of years. It's about almost 10 acres on a portion of Page Road that is Raleigh on the east side and Durham to the north. There's a lot of development coming up and down this stretch of Page Road. The access point to the south is going to be to an existing neighborhood that was rezoned for townhomes and is actively being built right now and should be constructed before this one gets to construction. In addition to proposing that Accent Park right away be annexed into the city of Durham, there is an existing road there now that's been used to serve the landscape business as well as kind of taking northward turn and go up to Smallwood. as well as kind of taking northward turn and go up to Smallwood. That section of Accent Park will also be improved to the city of Durham standards, and that's where the access for the subdivision will come in off Page Road. This project is actually also going through Plumerie Platt and construction drawing review concurrently, so we're a little bit further ahead in the process than just the rezoning. So, we've worked out any of those kinks with DOT as far as access along Page Road, things like that. As Aaron mentioned, we had the required community meetings at the, it was during, still in the hybrid model during COVID, so the virtual meeting, there were very few attendants. It was the one parcel that's directly south, and the questions surrounded mostly the dedication of the Patriot Drive right away through there because it basically bisects their parcel and renders it almost useless for development. And then there was a few other comments and concerns from Mr. Oakley, who lives just north of Accent Park Drive, and then the McCollins, who are north of the project portion adjacent to Page Road. And George actually met with them in the McCollins home and just talked through any questions they had. So, outside of that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone in person that would like to speak? No one signed up? All right. Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak? Please use the raised hand feature. We have Claudette Patterson. She raised it and then lowered it. Go ahead, Ms. Patterson.
Yes, my main concern is the noise factor that's associated with the build. I've been living here for about three years now, and prior to the new construction that's been going on, it's been considerably noisy because we're right by the light, which is at the corner of Page and Globe Road. And my main concern is the traffic is going to be multiplied, and it's going to be even more unbearable. You know, I'm sitting here at night listening to, this happens to be a quiet moment right now, but I'm constantly listening to traffic going by at high speeds. I don't know if there could be a solution with a speed zoning issue, I guess, to slow down the traffic and the, you know, and help with the noise. It's just unbearable.
Okay, is that a question for staff?
That is, yeah, because I'm really not sure what the zoning really involves.
Okay.
My main concern is the noise factor, and I'm afraid that it's going to get worse than what it already is, and at this moment, it's very unbearable.
Okay.
So, I don't know if a circle could be put in that light that's there now at Page and Globe Road intersection to slow down the traffic. The only quiet times we have is on Sunday, and that's Sunday night. Beyond that, the traffic is just unbearable.
Okay. We have Transport, DOT here, yeah.
So, Earlene Thomas Transportation. So, there are no current plans to install a traffic circle or roundabout along Page Road in this area. There are future widening plans to widen Page Road to a four-lane divided facility, but I'm not sure that would get to addressing the question or concern that's been raised.
And no plans for any speed studies to lower the speed limit or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. Page Road is maintained by NC DOT, so we would really need to reach out to them to see if there is anything that they can, or if they've had any requests to do a speed study or anything additional along Page Road.
Thank you. So, Ms. Patterson, that is a state road, if you heard that response. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would? Yes, Ms. Patterson. You can unmute her again, please. Can we unmute Claudette Patterson? A law harder speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd heard about the widening of the road, Page Road, and I'm concerned about that as well because I don't, I can't quite see how it could be expanded to four lanes, given the narrow green space that's next to the road, because that's going to encroach even more into our backyard. So, I don't know who I need to talk to to, you know, come to a solution on the noise factor.
Who would she contact at NC DOT?
We were just talking about that. We've got, we should have her email address on file because she registered to speak, and Earlene can send her some information via email, if that's okay.
Staff is going to contact you with some additional information on that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the Zoom platform that would like to speak? All right, hearing none. The chair is now going to close the public hearing, and we are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, I have a question for staff, actually with transportation. Given that the Page Road is sort of in the, between the jurisdictions of the city and the two cities, whose jurisdiction is that as far as Page Road is concerned? Is it split down the middle or what?
Earlene Thomas Transportation. I think Aaron will talk about where the planning boundary is, but all of Page Road is under DOT's jurisdiction, and I believe the widening project is on both plans that serve Durham and Wake County as well.
Yeah, I know we have an MPO on both sides.
Yes, so the project is the same.
Okay.
For both.
Yeah, I was kind of looking at the border and the alignment, but we do have developments in Durham County, but the city of Raleigh. Got it?
That's right.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner discussion or question? Commissioner Cutright?
Real quick, a quick question for the applicant. Appreciate the 17-5 donation to the Durham Housing Fund. What, I don't know if you've been watching closely, what we've been seeing a lot of are commitments to somewhere in the range of 5% to 10% of affordable housing units being presented. So, in this case, you know, three to, to call it, three to five units of your 70 being restricted or reserved for affordable. Is that something you could potentially proffer today or consider?
Thank you for the comment, Mr. Cutright. And George and I have spoke about that, and without him being here, I cannot proffer that. We understand that and think, bigger picture, we need to figure out a way to, to find a way to formalize what is required for affordable housing so that it's consistent across all rezonings. At this point, he's not going to consider five units or three units or one unit. He'll stick with the proffer for a payment to the housing fund.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner discussion or questions?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Commissioner Valentine?
Oh.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, thank you. So, can we just get some more clarity on the last response? I mean, I'm not clear whether there was consideration given for the affordable housing element of the project or not.
Yeah, there was consideration given, and I think he would stick with the payment as the offer.
That's it? Commissioner Morgan?
I was just going to make the motion unless anybody else wanted to comment.
No other comments? All righty.
Okay, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we take Case Z-22-00050, the Page Road Greenwood Homes, to be forwarded to the City Council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Valentine to move Case Z-22-00050, Page Road Greenwood Homes, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
No.
Commissioner Gurem?
Yes.
Commissioner McIver?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
It looks like it passed 6-3.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Case Z-23-0009-3317 and 3325, Rose of Sharon Road. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aaron Kane again, again, for zoning map change case 0Z-23-00009-3325 and 3317, Rose of Sharon Road. Excuse me. I state for the record that all properties within 600 feet, as shown on this map, were mailed a notice of public hearing on September 22, 2023. In addition, a sign was posted on the site on September 26, 2023. Affidavits are on file with the Planning Department. Site is located at 3317 and 3325, Rose of Sharon Road, and is 7.4 acres, six acres in size. The request is to change the zoning from RS-20 to PDR 6.4 with a textual development plan in order to build up to 46 townhouses. This request is consistent with the existing place type of mixed residential neighborhood. As stated before, the existing zoning is RS-20. The site is surrounded by RS-20 zoned land, though there are some higher-density PDR designations to the east. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. There's a church to the north and a single-family subdivision across Rose of Sharon Road. Farther north on Rose of Sharon is Riverside High School. The applicant has included commitments of monetary donations to Durham Public Schools and the Durham Dedicated Housing Fund. The applicant held two neighborhood meetings, one in March 2023 and the other in July 2023. Six comments have been received on social pinpoint for this case, addressing housing supply, stormwater controls, crime, and traffic. Staff determines that this request is consistent with the place type map designation of mixed residential neighborhood and meets 15 of 23 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. We'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Pam Porter with TMT LA Associates. We're landscape architects and land planners in Durham. With me tonight is William Wirt with Summit Engineering and Dani and Zeke Espidia with Toledo Builders, and we're all available for questions. Thank you, Aaron, for the presentation. As Aaron mentioned, we are requesting a rezoning from RS-20 to PDR 6.4 for the development of up to 46 townhomes. The site is just under seven and a half acres. Our primary access for the development will be on Rose of Sharon Road across from Pump Station Lane, and we are also proposing a stub to the property to the south. We have a 10-foot shared path along our frontage as part of our commitments, as well as appropriate turn lanes per discussions with NC DOT. We held two neighborhood meetings. The first one was on March 16, and there were five neighbors in attendance. At the time of that meeting, we were not sure if we were going to do apartments or townhomes. We were deciding between the two uses, and there were quite a few concerns about traffic. So, we took a step back and decided that townhomes would be the best use for this. We had a second neighborhood meeting on July 13, and no neighbors attended that meeting. As Aaron noted in his presentation, we are compliant with the UDO, and we are consistent with the place type maps as we are introducing townhomes into an area that is predominantly single-family detached. This project will add 46 townhomes to market rate housing stock in an area that has been predominantly single-family detached for a long time. While our proposal would increase the diversity of housing in an area where it is needed per the place type maps, it is small enough of a project that it will not overwhelm the surrounding roads with a lot of additional traffic. And the developer has made a commitment to a one-time proffer to the Durham Dedicated Housing Fund of $24,000, as well as a one-time contribution of $11,000 to Durham Public Schools. We think this is a great, small-scale project that will add much-needed housing stock and housing diversity to this part of Durham, and we thank you for your consideration of our request, and again, we're available for any questions.
Thank you. We have John Dorfer in the in-person meeting to speak.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I see the clock hasn't started yet. There we go. I have not practiced this for two minutes. I'll do my best. I live in a white farmhouse next to Summit Church. I can't really get into the details of that, but I bought the property after that project was approved and went through a crash course about development, code, what you can and can't do, and the church made some big mistakes that led us back to meet here together with you all. And the spirit of that discussion, what began a little contentiously improved, things have not been completely resolved, but that's something I've got to deal with now on my own. We had an MOU. This is a six-acre property, 100-year-old house, the Gerard family home. I have submitted forms for historic designation to Durham. I did that about a month ago. I have not heard back. I'm going to try to reach them in person. Maybe someone can help me with that. But the application for being considered a historic home is in. It's a significant property in terms of community gatherings. There was a sausage factory there. People used to gather. There's 200-year-plus-old trees in the back. It's a gorgeous old farmhouse, you know, spectacular. But I know I'm in Durham, and I'm not anti-development, but I'm anti-unnecessary lighting. And I don't understand, I'm naive, I guess, or just there's more to do. I understand from Ms. Young that there's a lot to be maybe redone on lighting in Durham. I may try to get involved in that. But in a nutshell, when I sit on the back of my porch, I'm looking at a parking lot that's never used and fully illuminated behind Summit Church. And now, and the folks developing these townhomes are unaware of this because I was out of the country when they had the community meeting. So, I want to be constructive, but I just don't want to be looking at yet more lights. I'd like to be mitigating efforts made with green buffers, with shields, and maybe it can set precedent for Summit Church to come back, and they're working on shields right now. So, that's the real reason I'm here. I'm very concerned that the combination of this historic home and the neighborhood it's in be somehow harmonious rather than in contradiction with one another. My last comment would be, I don't know what the code, the rules are about road speed. My last comment would be, I don't know what the code or the rules are about road speed and road noise, but Rose of Sharon is getting a little crazy. It's getting to be a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in person that would like to speak? Is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak? We have Laura Grillo. Go ahead.
Thank you for recognizing me. I live on River Run Road. I did not receive the notices that were circulated. I noted on the map that my home on River Run Road is just next to the last property that was notified.
Can you, ma'am, can you please state your name and address clearly, please?
Laura Grillo, 116 River Run Road.
Thank you.
I did not receive the notifications that the map indicated that only some of the neighbors on this small enclave of River Run Road were notified about what was happening in a timely manner. I have to say, I was impressed by the degree to which the applicants of Morehead Avenue were careful to solicit input and get buy-in by their neighbors. Clearly, this isn't the case here. I'm also very concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about the destruction of the green spaces that made this whole area such an attractive place for me to move to seven years ago. So much of that has been destroyed with the development, frankly, ugly development along Hillendale Avenue of all those townhomes, the development behind, on Crowsdale, that the backs of which we can see from Rose of Sharon, and the Summit Church project, which came as a big surprise that destroyed so much beautiful green space that I think was a travesty in terms of zoning, considering that it's next to that beautiful farmhouse that was just spoken about. And here again, I think this is a project that's completely out of keeping with the neighborhood that existed as a quiet residential area. I agree with the previous comment, too, that Rose of Sharon Road is highly trafficked. People zoom along it at high speeds, and this isn't going to help at all.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom platform? No one else, no one else in person? All right, I am closing the public hearing, and we are now open for commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Cutright?
To the applicant, I'll propose the same question regarding affordable housing. We've seen, you know, sort of 5% to 10% range. Maybe you can comment on that. One, I do appreciate the proffer to the Dedicated Housing Fund. So maybe you can just comment on how you've thought about the affordable housing and actual units.
Sure, we have, and I've got other rezonings in the works that do proffer affordable units as part of it, but for this particular project to date, we've not been able to make it work. So we are proffering a higher proffer monetary. We can revisit that before City Council, but at this time, we unfortunately cannot make a proffer to units. But we have talked about it extensively. It's just, it can be hard on some of the smaller projects with not a whole lot of units. It's harder to get the cost to work. But we will certainly revisit that before City Council.
Thank you.
What about the concerns that the neighbors have expressed about lighting in this rural area?
Sure. So the first speaker spoke mostly about the Summit Church. We're doing a residential neighborhood on the other side of Summit Church. We will have streetlights. It's required to have streetlights, but streetlights are spaced far enough apart where we're not lighting it like an auto park. It'll be lit like a neighborhood street. With regard to the second speaker and the notifications and her not receiving one, that was brought up during our first neighborhood meeting, and the president of the HOA of that neighborhood was on that call. And I did speak to that and say, you know, if your entire neighborhood is not getting a letter, please post this, let your neighbors know. And I assumed that was going to happen because the HOA did receive a notice about both of our meetings. You know, if somebody falls outside of the notification boundary but their HOA gets a letter, I like to think that the HOA posts it on a listserv or something, so we do get that community input. So I apologize to her for that she didn't get it, but she just was outside the boundary. The place type maps that have been reviewed and voted on call this mixed-use residential. It's not a large piece of property, so doing two types of residential units, like townhomes and apartments, it's not really feasible. But the map does call for a mix of housing types. This area is predominantly single-family detached. The comp plan, the place type maps, all call for different types of housing. After we sat back and reevaluated what would be better for this area, we thought apartments were probably not the best use. So townhomes, we decided to give that mix to a predominantly single-family detached area, but also providing that mix of housing type and housing stock that Durham needs in all these maps and comp plans that have been reviewed, that that's what it's calling for in this area. And with regard to the traffic, I mean, it's a maximum of 46 townhomes. The neighborhood across the street has more lots than our proposal has. So, you know, yes, our project is going to add traffic, but it's not going to add a ton of traffic. We can't fix existing issues with traffic. We're, we just can't. All we can do is mitigate the traffic that our project is adding to the roads, which we are, with appropriate turn lanes and right-of-way dedication to accommodate that. DOT has reviewed it. Durham Transportation has reviewed it, and everybody came to the consensus that what we were doing for our traffic was suitable and sufficient. You know, it's a common, it's a common concern that we hear from neighbors about traffic, but it's everybody here, or not everybody, most people here still have vehicles. So, you know, I'm not sure how else to mitigate that other than we're addressing the traffic concerns with the turn lanes and the right-of-way dedication that has been agreed upon by DOT and Durham Transportation.
And just to be clear, these townhomes are going to be for homeownership?
Correct.
Are there any other questions? No other questions? Are we ready to move this forward?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we take Case Z 23, 0009, which is 3317 and 3325, Rose of Sharon Road, to be forwarded to the city with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner Valentine to move Case Z 23, 009, 3317, and 3325, Rose of Sharon Road, forward with a favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cutright?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner MacIver?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Trapp?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentine?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay, it looks like it passed six to three.
Thank you. I don't think we have any old business to take care of on the agenda. Moving on to new business, we don't have past Commissioner Chair Amidolia here, so we're going to move past that.
Chair, it's actually, it's really your decision and up to the commission. You can, you could go ahead and approve the resolution tonight, and we could send it, or you can wait and see if, and we, and former Chair Amidolia, you could still come receive it in person. It's up to you how you want to handle.
Well, let's go ahead and pass the resolution, then if, whenever he comes, he can receive it.
It can be an informal consensus.
So we have this resolution. I'm going to go ahead and read it. Resolution in appreciation of Austin Amidolia. Whereas Austin Amidolia was a member of the Durham Planning Commission from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. And whereas planning, the Durham Planning Commission and residents of the city and county of Durham have benefited from his dedication and leadership, especially during the time of COVID-19, where he has supported, managed, and led multiple virtual public hearings, and where his leadership helped transition back to in-person meetings as the COVID restrictions were lifted. And whereas Austin's insight and knowledge allowed him to be voted as chair shortly after joining the commission. As the Planning Commission transitioned back to in-person hearings, Austin was a significant supporter in allowing meetings to be conducted in a simultaneous in-person and virtual environment, making public meetings more accessible to all members of the community. His ability to speak power with the community members in his role was exceptional. Austin oftentimes found, often, often found times to pause discussions to help center focus and keep the audience informed on what truly is happening with cases. And whereas we thank him for his support to residents and staff during the new comprehensive plan process while serving as the chairperson of the Durham Planning Commission. And whereas we acknowledge and recognize the thoughtful, intentional, and forward-thinking leadership Austin brought to each agenda item presented to the Planning Commission and the department work program. And whereas we thank Austin for his support and guidance of the planning staff, collaborating with staff to change the way we do work, and demonstrating how empathetic communication can lead to better results. And whereas this commission desires to express its appreciation for the public of a job well done, now therefore, be it resolved by the Durham Planning Commission, Section 1, that this commission does hereby express its sincere appreciation for the service rendered by Austin Amidolia to the residents of this community. Section 2, that the clerk for the commission is hereby directed to spread this resolution in its entirety upon the official minutes of this commission, and the resolution is hereby presented to Austin Amidolia as a token of the high esteem and respect held for him, adopted this 10th day of October, 2023. Kimberly Cameron, Chair. Have motion to approve.
Second.
But we've got to move first.
Some more.
Yeah, Commissioner Cutright moved, and Commissioner Trapp seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the meeting schedule for 2024. We meet at 5:30 on the second Tuesday of each month, unless otherwise noted, beginning January 9 of 2024, going all the way to December 10 of 2024, every single month, not a month off of all 12 months.
We're going to cross our fingers that we can make that happen.
Yeah. Do we vote on this schedule?
Yes, please. We would like a vote tonight, and then if we need to make adjustments, we can come back later and do that, if you see something. This is mostly to get it on the calendar and reserve the room for the rest of the year.
Hmm? Excuse me? I think they did.
I can't hear you, what? They take a month off in July, yes, they do. This commission, historically, years ago, used to take time off. It's just the way your rules of procedure read. If there's, if there's business to come before you, then the chair can work with the staff and decide if we put that business off or not. And typically, because of the position we're in, we don't put that business off, but we've been very busy, very busy, for about eight years straight now.
November 15.
Yes, but we do, we actually look for opportunities when we can give you all a month off, and we try to make that work.
Is there a motion to approve the schedule?
I make a motion that we approve the schedule for Planning Commission meetings for the, as read, for the year 2024.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cutright. I think I saw Commissioner Valentine's mouth move first for the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
No.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so the last thing that we need to do tonight before we adjourn, Grace has mentioned our rules of procedure, and we need to update those because I think they have not been updated since, like, 2009 or something like that.
2009-ish, I think.
Yeah, 2009-ish, that's like 14 years ago. So we need to update those. So I've appointed a subcommittee. We have Commissioner Shigeris, Commissioner Trapp, and Commissioner Cutright, who has agreed to work on those. And so you all will need to get together and get with staff to work on updating those. Take a couple months, make sure you cover everything, and then come back and report. And I think you all have to meet in person. Also, at this time, I would like to recognize that this is Commissioner David Morgan's last meeting, and I would just like to thank him for his service at this time, and had the pleasure of working with him, I think, for the last three years, three and a half years. And just, you know, thank you for all your insight and his consistent care of the community and especially Southeast Durham. And we'll, we'll have to get a new motioner when you leave.
We should have trained somebody this time.
Yeah, somebody better get ready.
You know, usually Commissioner Trapp does it, so.
Yeah. But thank you.
Yes, it's been a pleasure, and as the second-longest commissioner since our, Nate Baker is the longest on our commission, I want to thank you and wish you well.
Thank you. All right.
Chair Cameron, if staff would ask if you, once you have, who is going to be the contact for the committee, it's, it could, whenever y'all decide, just to let us know, and we'll work with you to set up meetings. There might even be some options where we don't meet in person every time. I think we utilized a virtual option for the committee for the other committee we had.
The one I did that...
Yes, that, I think, maybe we did one, so we can work through some options and see what that looks like, but just let us know who you prefer for us to contact. We don't need to know tonight.
Okay. All right, if there is no other business to come before us, we are adjourned.